This conference will now be recorded.
All right, we'll call to order the Monterey Select Board on November 25th at 6:00 PM. We have all three members of the board present here in town hall. And the first order of business is the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. And Ken has kindly joined us to walk us through some developments since our last meeting. About the composition of the board of presidents.
Yeah, I've been reaching out a kind of a copy of what we kind of final, what we came up with at our meeting to pass on to you all and for discussion. Hey, it's Justin.
Hello. Are you not concerned about the possibility of deadlock?
So, the number is flexible in terms of tonight.
Right.
So, we can talk about that. I'm, I'm not that concerned about it, but you know, if people feel strong, we can go to nine or go back to seven. Or, you know, we'll keep it at eight.
So you're confused that becoming eight with the select number, is that?
Yeah, becomes eight with the select.
Five members in the town, two members in the background, two in the select, where is eight? I mean.
Or if you had four and four, four and four, or a vote or something like that.
Tie goes to the select.
Well, it can't be, if it's seven, then it can't be eight, right? That's probably how.
I would, I know that Justin raised the issue of too many people, but I don't, I don't, I think we're, the, the, the board, for me anyways, the makeup of the board right now feels very comfortable. Seven people feels very comfortable. Adding one more person, or two more persons is not going to, is not going to change that. So, I, I would opt to go nine rather than to go less.
Right.
Plus, we're, we're doing a lot of stuff and it's nice to have the members that everybody's.
You like being the delegate.
Yeah, big time.
I mean, it seems like everybody's pretty involved.
You think?
Makes it so happy.
A great job.
Everybody is totally involved and, and coming up with all kinds of ideas, so.
And everyone's on like a different avenue of interest and something like that. It's really going great.
So, outside of that, outside of that, then the rest of, the rest of the document that Donna sent over is fine. I mean, there's really no, I, I don't see any issues there. Frank talked a little to me today about, about some of the bonding and stuff like that. But it's all, this all go back to the, to the select board. There's a lot of independents in this group and, and the state apparently set it up there wanting to give independence. But we're tied in with the select board. There's a member on, a select one on the thing, so I don't see any real issue with that.
You guys have thoughts?
Um, good, thank you. Come back.
I would go with nine before eight. The question is, in the years out, you know, as people leave the board, will you be able to fill the positions? So that's, you know, something you've got to think about.
Should it have to maintain be a number?
The, the number could be flexible. I mean, it doesn't, I mean, it's like all the boards in town. You run the board.
The, the financial overview has an audit that has to go through the treasurer.
Yeah.
I would like to see some kind of modification where the state, the select board is kind of updated on where they're at periodically through the year. Like, my wife does the pantry. They're like, every other month, here's what our donations are, here's our expense. So, they know, the whole board knows where.
Well, you can't trust the pantry. I mean, that makes sense. No, that's fine.
I, I think some kind of like that. I, I'm sometimes, I came from a background that had a lot of financial problems. You don't wait to the end of the year to say, oh God, I got a problem.
No, 100%.
So, I think there should be some kind of, you know, line in there that, you know, bi-monthly financials update. It's a simple memo if you're really doing the job. It's not, it's not.
Do you think quarterly would be?
Quarterly would be fine with me, but I think that, you know, because you, I, you know, the, the good news is the, the board is really, the trust, you guys would be really, you could be dealing with some big numbers if things go well, you know. And, and you got a very energy-proof, very smart group. And you know that there could be some big, you know, you could get into six figures, hopefully.
Seven.
Sure.
Can I sign you up for that? So, I think there should be some like quarterly financial update memo to the select board. Of course, you always have the treasurer to do the audit. And they probably should have someone assigned to the, you know, a lot of boards have one financial. The numbers are going to the one person. Always add up to the board.
Treasurer.
Yeah, we could, we could appoint that person at our next meeting.
My only concern is, this came up with the school regionalization district. There's supposed to be a select board member and the finance committee member and people change seats. And some select board members, ex-select board members stayed on the school regionalization committee. So what happens if you have a select board member whose term comes up? It seems like a small deal, but it will happen. And I just want that question answered, if they serve out the, the rest of that term as trustee or?
No, I think.
Or if another select board member.
I think the select would then appoint a, a member to replace that person.
Can I just specify that?
We can put that in.
Yeah, because it wasn't, it was not clear in the regional school district planning board where that didn't always happen.
Yeah, is that one of the, one of the other towns that I, I read the, this document that they had, they had that in, in there in terms of replacement.
Thank you. Any, Mickey Jervis?
Um, I have a couple of questions and I just seem to, I'm probably missing out on a lot. A lot of this stuff hasn't come out from this couple of meetings we've had here. You know, are, have you, in other words, have you been working as a working group? Right? And have you determined our needs? Have you determined what our desired results are for these, what the housing is going to be? And how best to reach these goals? Have all these things been decided? I get one with shaking his head no and the other one with shaking their hand yes. So, I'm saying that, well, these things, what, what this document I read that came out last week, it is so broad and it just gives you all kinds of authority to accept all kinds of things. And, and there's no determination of how much do we actually think we need? How much do we want to have? How do we want to have it? There's no, none of that structure in it. This is just, you know, here, you guys can all do this. And not that I don't believe you will do the right job, and I don't really trust anybody. But, another question, if you're going to accept property of any sort, is that property still taxable? Or is that, then, so then, while you own the property, the town is getting, not getting taxes on those properties? So if you have five different pieces of property, the town has now got that off the record, said, so I'm going to be paying more taxes.
So to your first question, maybe Ken can help with the second one. We are basically like forming into what we are going to be and stuff like that. So, we are working on figuring out what the needs of the town are. We're working on, we're working on, um, right now, part of, part of what we're doing is, is figuring out what types of people are living here, what types of people would like to live here, what types of, of income that we're working on. And we're basically, we're basically looking at all kinds of information to come up with something. And since we're relatively new, we haven't necessarily decided anything yet. We're still in the like research type phase of the whole thing.
And, and part of that also is that we're, we're, there were a couple of great documents done by the planning board over the last couple of years that, that, um, in terms of the housing study and, and a total town study. And we're using that as kind of the basis because there was, there was a lot of, there's a lot of incredibly good information in that. And that's kind of the basis, we're, that's the little, that's the foundation we're working on to go beyond. But in terms of where we're going and what we're doing, we, we're, this is, this is just the beginning. I mean, what this, what this does is gives us a, a method to raise funds for doing housing. But it, that, that's a real broad, and, and you said that, it's very broad because it's, it's left broad. The state legislature set it up so it's broad, so that, so that it can go in a number of different directions. But the direction we'll go in will be based on what the town wants. All of this goes before the town and all of this will, will end up, you know, in front of both the select board and, and town meeting at some point.
Right, no decisions have actually been.
So, I, I just wonder if there should be this foundation of what we need and where we want to go before we get this money thing.
So if you look at the housing report done by the planning board, there, there was not only, there's, there's, it's about a 20-page document. It not only clarifies a number of different directions to move in, but it also, there are also surveys done of, of Montereyans and quite, quite good responses on the survey, numbers, responses. So that's, that's what we're using to kind of make decisions in terms of which direction to go in.
And we need money to do research and things like that. So, and establishing this before this special town meeting helps us get to where like, like getting site plans and getting consultants and that sort of thing.
So where are you going to get this money from?
I'm going to raise your taxes.
Can I, can we answer a question? So there's no tax money associated with creating a trust?
There is no tax money at all associated with this.
Yes, there is.
Oh, there isn't.
Not with creating a trust?
If you take, if you take properties off the tax roll, it's going to increase by taxes. That's a fact.
That's only if somebody gives a property that then goes into the trust. Stop seeing the trust doesn't involve.
The idea would be the trust would develop the property and then you have.
So, is it, I'm, I'm just wondering if it's a cart before the horse. Are we establishing a trust before we have good ideas on things?
No.
When's your next housing committee meeting? When's your next housing committee meeting?
Next Wednesday.
Okay, Mickey, would you be able to go to that? Because I think that these are great questions, but we have a long select board agenda for tonight and we can't spend too much time on this issue, as important as it is tonight.
But right, to, to alleviate some of your concerns, we're, we're, we're looking at, at town-owned property right now that's currently not on the tax roll.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's the focus right now.
That's the one piece property right over here. And actually, I saw the, um, the document that the name of the Fox Hill property, and I thought that was very, very relevant.
The, uh, the request for, um.
Yeah, I saw probably a request to determine, uh, Fox Hill Road Affordable Housing Scope of Services. And I thought that was relevant.
So are you going to get us a new trust document?
What I'll do is I'm, I'm going to figure out a way.
After your meeting next week.
To get this in, to get it back to you. What's the deadline for the, for this special?
Try to get us to us. January 17th.
Oh, okay. But it, it has to be signed on the 16th or something, three weeks from today.
But we don't want to get the trust document right before. If you get it to us in the first week of December.
Yeah, next, opportunity next week.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Wednesday, what time?
Well, hold on, just a second. The, um, the agenda meeting you sent me was for the fourth, which is Thursday.
Which is full, yeah.
Not Wednesday, yeah. You sent me a meeting notice and it says 12:04. So I'll change it to the third.
It's Wednesday.
Good catch.
Um, so you'll have your meeting next week? You'll get an updated trust document to us.
Yep.
So you just need us to make those three changes and then you're all set?
Well, and I want you to, you all to read it all.
But as far as you're concerned, that's, that's what you're asking for us for next week? Have it written up with the three changes now?
And any other changes that you see fit? You could let us know.
We're already, we're already going to fill it, so, so these are additions to what we've kind of come up with. So we're, we're comfortable with where it ends right now, especially if the paragraph that I wrote was comfortable.
But did we decide on nine? Is that, we were pushing for nine?
I, I, nine.
Nine is fine.
Nine. It has to be a.
Crand.
Maybe, I know what we're going to do, we can add another select board now.
Mickey, I'd be happy to talk to you about it after too, but I'd be happy to talk to you outside of meeting about a couple of things that I thought of when you were talking, but I don't want to do it now. I have too much else. I, I also wanted to talk to you about something else, so.
I'm, I'm going to catch up to you.
Monday?
Sure.
Okay. Next up, I think we're going to move items around because we have people that join us. Alan, welcome to Monterey. I think you've met.
I got Frank, Justin, and there's Suya. Hi, I'm here.
So, Alan's been selected and is one to accept the position of Director of Operations, which is awesome. Interviewed very well. Great application, so.
We really need you and we're excited to have you.
I'm very excited to be here. I spoke with Roger yesterday, very excited.
Good, what can you start?
I called him, I said, next Monday sounds good to me.
That's how I'm finding it.
On the first of December, that way we start off the month, a very chance to get in here and get my feet wet. Get an understanding with the guys and work with Roger closely. So.
All right, um, I think we'll take a formal vote to hire Alan Havel as the Director of Operations.
Second motion.
Is there any other discussion? Call a vote?
Yes.
Yes, so that's the man who's approval. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good luck. I don't mean that in.
No, 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 I understand. That's what I am feeling.
I'll be sending you some online stuff. Okay. Yeah, I'll get, I'll get that. Okay, okay.
It's 11:25, 25. Yeah, 25, 25.
Yes, we'll move on to the MVP grant update.
Sure. All right, well, good evening. And I'm here tonight to talk about MVP 2.0 and possibly another funding opportunity. I'm joined tonight by Emma Sass, who is the Regional Director for the MVP program. And, um, so, I mentioned briefly, I believe, at the last time I spoke, about this requirement called MVP 2.0, which is basically an update of the previous planning effort that the town went through to be a certified MVP community for funding related to climate change projects. Projects that will meet and adapt the town to climate change. In Monterey and as well as other communities inland, flooding is the main and most important risk associated with climate change. So, um, the town is now one of 29 other communities throughout Commonwealth, I believe, on the current list of towns that are required to undertake this planning effort. It's basically an update of our original plan, which was certified in 2018, which enabled the town to submit funding requests called action grants for the culverts, the main culvert, and other projects that may happen going forward. This is a, I believe it's a 23-month effort that has two phases. Emma can also provide some additional detail as I speak. The first phase is basically the plan, update the current plan. And the current plan is going to include especially focus on inclusion and diversity. Once that is achieved in the 10-step process, then there is a so-called seed project that will basically take the town through and exercise in the plan that was created in the first phase. Both phases are accompanied by $50,000. So a community such as a rural community like Monterey, and for that matter, there are three other Berkshire County communities that will be having their updates done at the same time. That $50,000 will be for the, the first $50,000 for the planning and the second, of course, is for that seed project. The seed project actually is basically boots on the ground. Taking the planning effort and actually proposing a specific project that will almost act like the action grants that the town will go through and complete as part of the MVP 2.0.
Could you give an example, like a project that's been done by someone for that? I'm just curious, there's so many.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sure Emma has some, her specific 2.0 seed projects, Emma?
Yeah, we've seen, so, hi everyone, thanks for, for letting me join in tonight. We've seen a whole range of different seed projects and so something that we've been encouraging is for, excuse me, for towns to keep an open mind, that the seed project really emerges from your updated priorities through this process, through getting, you know, more community engagement and input. And so, uh, it's, we can't predict what a town will move towards, but some of the things we've seen from the last two rounds of MVP 2.0. In Windsor, they established a climate resilient town forest as like a teaching and research and recreation hub. In Goshen, they're working on communication, so thinking about what does resilient communications look like, both in day-to-day town operations and in emergencies, if there's a, you know, climate weather-related emergency. So thinking both digitally and, you know, signboards and those kinds of things, thinking about communication networks across the town. How do they kind of increase community engagement going forward through their communication? In Chesterfield, they're working on, uh, outfitting one of their municipal buildings, their community center to have potable water, thinking about, again, as like a day-to-day community hub and as an emergency shelter. In South Hadley, they're working on resilient, climate resilient housing trust, thinking about affordable housing as a climate resilient kind of foundation. Just some examples, but we've really seen kind of all across the board, um, a real diversity of projects. And again, like it's a seed project, so we, it's $50,000 towards the first part of a project. So, the hope is that this is both a chance to kind of put a priority into action, see some results, and then also set the town up for potentially future grant opportunities.
Thank you.
And part of the planning phase will involve a, perhaps the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission. They were the organization that actually helped the town go through the original planning phase when we first decided as a town to join the MVP program. So, they would conduct open meetings, informational forums perhaps as part of the program, the planning phase. So, again, I just kind of circle back to the fact that this is at no cost to the town as long as we don't go over the $50,000 for each phase. And, yes.
How does it impact or not the culvert plan for the center of town? Is it a prerequisite for getting more funding for that project?
Yes, actually, the fact that towns like Monterey that are required to do this, will be doing that hopefully as we go through another application for the design and final permitting of the culvert, right, adjacent to town hall here. It also enables us now to plan and participate in future MVP action grants. If we don't do this, then we cannot apply for current and future, actually, future action grants.
But since we're, since we're in the process of making a new plan, we can keep our application for the culvert moving along.
Moving along. And as Emma mentioned, the priorities will include perhaps a discussion of not only this particular culvert, but other similar culverts and efforts that are needed to reduce flooding risk. That sound pretty accurate, Emma?
Yeah, that, that sounds good to me. I think the, I would echo that because this, I'm, because Monterey is up for MVP 2.0 this year, you would need to at least apply to MVP 2.0 to maintain eligibility for action grants. But we've also seen towns go, who've gone through the 2.0 process have more competitive applications for action grants. Part of the 2.0 process is putting together a core team. And so, um, having some of the folks who maybe were on the initial planning group, you know, folks who are on other municipal boards and committees, but also we have a program to have community liaisons, so folks who have connections to different parts of the community, who might not be represented in a traditional planning process, who might be more vulnerable to climate change. So trying to think about building capacity. And so, because of that capacity building, there's, you know, additional community engagement, like I mentioned. And so those pieces then translate into more competitive action grants potentially. So not only is the town maintaining its eligibility, but also hopefully able to translate some of the pieces that are gained through the 2.0 process into future action grants.
Considering that Monterey is not an environmental justice community as is found in Pittsfield and perhaps other towns in Berkshire County, the priority is basically priority populations, which would be our aging population of seniors, current and person included. And, so basically, it's, it's a, a new updated package for, for planning and action going forward on these related types of projects. So, um, the second item that I'd like to mention is for the culvert project, we need design and final permitting. At a meeting hosted by Emma and other towns in Berkshire County about a week or so ago, there was a discussion of funding opportunities for projects similar to this culvert project here. And what came to the fore was the fact that the Mass Department of Transportation has a grant program, in fact, several grant programs that Monterey might be interested in. That resulted in a telephone conversation with four representatives from Mass DOT today. And the so-called Small Bridge Program seems to be a very good possibility of providing funding for the final design and permitting. And, um, at this point, that's similar to the MVP 2.0. This is a program that is funded by the state, provided that a contractor, basically an engineering firm that's on a list of preferred contractors is used. And it just so happens that the contractor that has provided the current design and, and hopefully will continue is on that list as GCA engineers. So, it's a nice mixture of, or blend of, we have the same contractor. The Department of Transportation is very much interested in this particular project. And we're, as a result of the conversation today, it, it appears to be a very strong, strong opportunity as opposed to going the MVP route, which is an entirely separate process for funding. They will fund up to $150,000 for a project such as this project of design and permitting.
So what's the, what's the recommendation as to how to move forward to go with the Small Bridges Program?
Well.
That would cover the whole package.
If, financially, it would cover the work to be done in terms of the.
The rest of the section of the design too?
Just the design and permitting. We can come back after that, and their maximum would be only a million dollars for construction phase. So a possible thought that is still sort of churning around is combining both the Mass DOT program with the MVP group program to fund the construction. The MVP program has a max currently, depending on the year-to-year appropriations from legislature, of $3 million. So our recent estimate, which is about a year and a half old now, and more than likely will be higher, was 3.7 or 8 million. So right at, right at that point of combining both, we're potentially $4 million if, if that both grant opportunities are awarded. I'd also like to mention that the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission has also been a very active in a regional grant called the PROTECT Grant. It's a federal-funded grant that involves multiple municipalities, including Monterey, that if it's funded, that may, quite frankly, cover, if not all, very close to all of the cost of the project. Now, that's at the federal level, it's percolating, it's, we know that there are some pauses going on in funding through grants at the federal level. But we'll be looking at both the MVP, the DOT, and then at the federal level going forward as to where we, we could best get that project done in a timely fashion and within the budget and have low-cost exposure by the town.
So one thing concerning the MVP is that the, the MVP 2.0, they are looking for a letter of commitment?
Yes, and I believe that letter is, if that letter is acceptable to the board, that would have to be submitted by December 15.
Yes.
Okay, so that's the 2.0 letter of commitment. And I believe there is a, another item that I noticed, and perhaps Emma could confirm or give us an update on this. I believe there is a certain best practice that would enhance a grant opportunity that a municipality would have to consider passing.
Sorry, do you mean for 2.0 or for an action grant?
Yes.
For, she asked for which one?
Dennis, is this the best practice for the 2.0 planning phase or for the action phase two?
I might have another one confused with this.
Okay, I think for the, for the 2.0 application, because Monterey is required to do it this year, Monterey will get priority, so I think the application is.
Good.
It's a different level of competitiveness, I should say, than the action grant, which is a competitive grant. I think that if Monterey is interested in participating this year, we're really excited that, to have you come through the 2.0 process, so I wouldn't worry about best practices for the application for 2.0.
That answers that.
So there's also a grant request form to work on this that Dennis has submitted.
And that's always an upset number.
Forty-eight hours.
Sounds like a tease, huh?
Hopefully, it's a lot less.
When it comes around to making a core planning committee, will you be responsible for that or will Roger be responsible for that?
I think with the selected organization, perhaps the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission and Roger, they'll help make that decision.
And I think the last time it was done, the police chief, the highway superintendent, the fire chief are all part of that emergency vulnerability.
Yes, they call that a core team, and I was part of that at that time. So that's, you know, I'd be glad to participate however I can, just to kind of move it along, make sure we get it done in a efficient way.
And what's the timeline? Do we know when we'll, when the MVP 2.0 planning will start?
That's a great question. Applications are due December 15th. I would expect announcement would be just after the new year, so sometime like in the winter. And then the first step is getting a planning vendor on board, so like, like Dennis mentioned, that could be VRPC, that could be another vendor. And so having that vendor kind of help put the core team together goes from there. But I don't have an exact start date for the planning process, but I would guess like late winter, early spring.
Okay, thank you.
So that's the update. Thanks for your time.
Thanks for all your work on this.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Dennis.
All right, we're gonna move things around a little bit, as we've already been doing. We're gonna deal with the open meeting law complaint, so I think this is kind of twofold. One is the board's legally required to get a response out to the Attorney General or designate a responder, which I could be, I've worked to draft a response to the complaint, but I couldn't send it to you all outside of the meeting, so you haven't had a chance to review it. Well, we could discuss it or, if we could designate me as the, as the responder and I can just sign my own, but we have to. That's the legal part of it, is we need to designate that and talk about it at a meeting, and I think there's a, the second thing is Noel is here and we want to discuss, so. Yeah.
He already wrote it, so I guess he knows what it says.
Yeah, I know what it says. We don't need more. He'd be surprised, but.
I haven't read the whole thing yet. Everything is typically very good.
Well, the town council, right, so it, the, the long and short of it is, in speaking with town council, I could just sign it. It doesn't have to be the whole board because you all haven't had a chance to read it. We were, I think in part, the complaint alleged a few violations of open meeting law. In speaking with town council, I think we were in part in violation of open meeting law and in part not. And the letter kind of details that, and so that will go to Noel as well as to the Attorney, Attorney General, and then they'll make a finding as to whether we are or not and what remediation remedial action we can take to rectify the offense, so.
All right, I didn't have something I prepared to say to Noel since you specifically asked for me to apologize, and I believe that I am aware of that, so. Would you like to go ahead and do that?
Yeah.
So there was kind of a, but I mean, that I actually am also sorry. I'm gonna need it out loud for the record as well. On October 24th, 2025, I inappropriately raised issues regarding the Conservation Commission that were not on the agenda. No matter my sense of urgency or frustration with the process of a little darker amendment, it was unspecialled me to have raised this issue without proper notice. Furthermore, it was unfair of me to have singled out a single individual amidst a complex web of difficulties to have done so without presenting concrete evidence at that time and without giving Chairman Wiki the opportunity to respond. I should have written chair, I apologize. While I firmly believe that there is evidence that there were significant procedural issues with the Conservation Commission's handling of the Town's drawdown amendment, when our goal is to improve town governance, rather than to place blame, such issues are best handled more thoughtfully and delicately, and of course, with due notice. Ms. Wiki, the board and the town have my most profound apologies, and I will certainly endeavor not to repeat this mistake. Thank you. And I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
And would you like to speak?
Well, you know, I'm not, I don't want to talk about anything of the content or whatever was said, you know, clearly, you know, the issue for me, first of all, was just the procedural violation. I, I do want to remind you, though, that, that early on, I did give you the contact numbers for the people that we report to at DEP, if, if they think that we're handling something appropriately and encouraged you to reach out to them if you had any concerns at all about how that application was being handled. So I just kind of want to remind you of that just now.
Oh, Noel told me. I don't know if she told anyone.
Yeah, Justin and I were texting. He texted me his concerns, and I texted him back and let him know that there was a place to take those concerns. If he had any feeling at all that we were handling anything with any impropriety, those are the people that would want to be aware of it at DEP. And so you should reach out to those people if they had, if you, if you guys had any concerns at all.
I would like to see us figure out an appropriate way to talk about the procedural issues, some even simple things, because we don't have a full-time agent to receive applications. I think there needs to be a clear person responsible for receiving them. According to the regs, an application, any type of application is supposed to be date and timestamped, and the person giving the application is supposed to get a receipt. I don't know if that regularly happens, I know it didn't in this case, but I think the bigger issue is that we need to figure out how to make sure that if someone comes into Town Hall with an application of any kind, the people that are in Town Hall know what to tell them and how to make sure that it does get handled properly. Right, so, and I think that's a group endeavor that the town needs to make sure happens.
I couldn't agree more, and with the level of, number of applications that come in.
It's not gonna get better.
It's not gonna get better, and without a full-time agent, it's gonna, it's gonna be, it's gonna be challenging.
So what role could, I mean, Roger usually takes these things?
I took two today.
Yeah.
So what's the problem with that? I, I think the issue is like, how is, am I legally responsible to take them? Because a lot of times it's supposed to be the town clerk that signs this stuff, so what does that mean?
I know that I received a day, is it?
I don't really know what the regs, regs are for.
They also get, they also get sent to us electronically. I get an electronic copy from the applicant as well as Shane.
So I, like today, all I had, I should put together a document, sort of like a two-part document, because all I have to officially give somebody is really just one of those two, two-piece, two-part receipts, like if you were paying with a check. So that's kind of our cash, that's what I have, and that's what I gave the people, and I left the documents on the table in, in the, in the office, shared office with them. So I'm thinking, as all this has been happening, that maybe there's a better, a better document that I could have that has, you know, easier to, makes a little more sense than, than a slip of paper that I hand to somebody that should be like.
And the document itself is supposed to be date and timestamped as well.
Yeah, yeah. Again, I'm not certain who legally is supposed to bring it in. Can, can I bring it in? I, I guess I could ask. I'll ask Tom Council.
Shane, you and Shane and I can get together, Roger, next Monday if that works for you when Shane's here, and, and maybe just touch base on that.
Yep, because despite the fact that we want to raise the agents' hours, and we do, that we're nowhere close to a full-time agent, that's not happening. So we have to find another solution.
And I think that with the zoning board, it's required by CFR, by the, I guess it's CMA, right? But it's used as regulations that it's the clerk, but I didn't see, when I was reading the CMR, I don't know, you know, but I didn't see anything in there requiring it to be a clerk. I think clerk is common because they're, they serve an official capacity, but again, the clerk only has limited hours. So it doesn't have to be the clerk, it might be better if it wasn't the clerk.
Yeah, I mean, in the three and a half years that I've been on the CONCOM, what's usually happened is that applicant brings the things in, they go into the CONCOM mailbox, if they fit in the mailbox, otherwise they go into the, you know, the office on the table. They, they always let, like, they emailed me today and emailed Shane and said, "We're dropping off seven copies at Town Hall today with the check. Here's the electronic version of all the documents and the pictures and everything." But they always, you know, they're required to do that, to send it electronically as well as, as the seven copies.
When they do that, do they get an email that it's received with a date and time?
That's a good question, Susan. Not always, I mean, I mean, often I will, when I get the email, I will often respond or I'll, you know, respond to Shane and say, you know, you make sure that you confirm with them that we have everything. And, yeah. So, yeah, maybe, maybe that's a process that, that needs to be, you know, that needs to be looked at and improved, perhaps. And I'm not aware that we've, that that's caused us to lose anything or, you know, anything's gone missing as long as we have, you know, the, the digital and the things that come in. But that's certainly, I mean, there's, you know what, you can, anything can be improved, any process can be improved, so.
I think in our case, it was, at least I can speak for myself, it was frustrating from when we thought, from the time period when I thought I was told something happened, and then to find out 10 days, 12 days, 14 days later that either, that something clerical hadn't been done, which people can vote how they want to vote, and this has nothing to do with that, but when something clerical holds up the process, and I know you were transitioning agents around that time, from one agent to a consultant agent to a new agent. But if I was the applicant and not working in Town Hall, I would be disappointed just the same to come back and, and have this delay of, you know, all these things weren't submitted when we thought, when I thought that they had been done, and that happened twice. And that's not to, that's just to say it's frustrating, I think, for everyone involved when something like that happens.
And I think that probably should be a separate conversation from this agenda item.
Yeah.
And we can, you know, find a time to all get together and talk about that at a meeting in the future.
Yeah, I think very, let's, I think we dealt with the open meeting law complaint. I'm gonna ask, I think it makes more sense for me to respond than have the whole board respond, which is allowed, but I do need your all permission.
I, I move that we appoint Justin to complete the OML violation of spots.
There any other questions?
I'll say.
Call and vote.
Aye.
Aye. So that carries unanimously, so I will respond to Noel and to the Attorney General.
So will that be by email?
Yeah, I mean, I have it basically for you here.
Okay.
And I can give you a hard copy, the, the signature line's gonna look different, but I would just send it by email to you as well.
Is there a way to get into the conversation when you're online?
Oh, hi, Molly.
Hi, everybody. I just have a quick, a quick. Hi, everybody. Um, I just have a quick, a quick comment, a kind of a quick comment and a question. Uh, we have Kim on the, um, also on Zoom here, and, uh, she deals with the town of Dalton and also probably other areas. And I'm just wondering how those towns handle an application that comes in? And if they're, let's say, for example, their, um, agent is not at a meeting, that, that agent is not at a meeting, which our agent was not at the meeting, can the agent still submit the application instead of having me and David Myers submit the application? Can the agent submit the application? I had to have a question about that myself.
I think it's a great question, and I'm realizing now, as I'm responding to an open meeting law complaint, that
Another conversation.
We can't let the conversation wander too far afield of the matter listed on the agenda.
Yeah, it's just that you guys were wandering, so I, I wanted to ask that question, but that's fine.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's how problems get solved in small towns. We talk at meetings and, and resolve issues. So, but that said, let's keep on track here. I'm gonna get the open meeting law complaint response to Noel officially and to the Attorney General. And we're gonna move on to the next agenda item, which is the, the bylaw review committee proposal, which is the general bylaws, um, the proposed general bylaws for the town to be put on the town meeting warrant. And I think they're in good shape, and it basically go onto the town meeting warrant unless there's any.
So, I, I mean, I started looking at some of these, and when you start looking at the comments, it's a little hard to figure out which ones, like, all the comments are still there. So, it's not always apparent whether whatever the comment was, is that it's dealt with or not.
It's the issue that is.
Yeah.
Um, you know, some of them I know, like, we are gonna want to continue to mail our warrant. There may come a time where we don't, but I don't think that's the time is now. Um, but there were a few of them that I kind of thought were of concern. Um, I'm not sure what to do about the act commission, for example. Um, it. I know that we voted to do it, so maybe we have to leave it in for a time, but it's never actually been set up. We don't use it. Maybe we need to take it out in the second round, but Eric's comment is, you know, um, I don't know what to make of that. Do we leave it in, or is it actually not part of the bylaws because of what it says?
I think given the, the issues with that and the fact that it's hardly ever had any appointees.
I mean, if it wasn't ever really properly part of the bylaw, do we need town approval to remove it? Or, like, I, I don't know what to do. Um, yeah, I know. Look at your face. I, I feel exactly the same way. And now, what about the personnel policies, Article Four? Um, I think Donna is absolutely right, that if we're going to have this committee, we should say how many people should be on it. But I'm gonna go ahead and put right out there, give it a read, gone through, update them, and that Noel the complexity. Um, that I'm not, at this point, I'm not really sure that a committee of townspeople are the best people to have serving to do this. But I don't know what we do about that.
What we'll do is, it's, it's our, it's our opportunity to have a clean slate. Please. Or just move outside or down the hallway or something, but we can't close the door because it's an open meeting and it's getting hot. I think what we should do, and David, you can, I think we've been back and forth about this. I think we should remove them and just note it in a letter to everybody. And I don't think anyone is going to fight, say, we need a personnel committee or we need a ag committee. So, I would, I'm gonna put this in my notes, but delete personnel and the ag committee. So, that's Article Four, and it's personnel.
Section fourteen.
Article Four is personnel.
Section fourteen, Article One, I think is a heck of a shit.
Oh, no, that might be right. We should know that.
Um.
Article one, section fourteen.
Okay, so we're just removing the word center, thank goodness. Um, then there's in Article Six, develop departmental revolving funds.
Yeah, we can read, we can delete those sections.
Delete Section Two and Three, but then we have to renumber.
Yeah.
That's not impossible.
No, I know, but somebody has to do it, is my point.
I, how about this? I will do it. Well, David, do you want to be responsible for these changes, or do you want me to be? Because I, either way.
You direct me, I'll do it.
Then I direct you.
And give him a memo, email what you want, let him do it, you know.
Well, no, we're, well, you're.
I'm kind of my boss in this one.
You're taking notes, right?
Susan's your boss here.
No, 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 no.
Um, that's not wrong with the agenda. Um, I, no, but in all seriousness, let's, let's set a process where if we agree to these changes tonight, David, you can go ahead and make them for us.
I will do that.
Okay, so, we're going to delete Section fourteen, ag committee, because it's, there's some question marks around its formation to begin with, and it hasn't been active in a very long time.
Correct.
And Article Four Personnel Committee.
Right.
We're gonna delete, and.
And the word center in Article Five.
Yeah.
Oh, you're just showing that we're deleting it? Is that why it's centered crossed out?
Oh, let me.
Yeah, center's already crossed.
Article Five.
But it, it still appears, but it's crossed out. We're crossing it out, right?
Right, so you're in Article.
Now, I'm not even counting, because it's already been.
Yeah, it's already been done. You're in Article Five. So, Article Six, we're deleting Sections Two and Section Three.
Right.
But then we have to renumber.
That was Article Six.
Departmental revolving funds.
Directions Two and Three, which are included by law. There's also an editorial change that one of my committee picked up. It's very tiny, but I want you to know about it. I have to find it, first of all. It would be after Article Nine, Solicitors' Permit. The numbering that council had was Article Four, Regulation of Motorized Water Vessels, should be Article Ten. Article Ten.
Wait, wait. Solicitors' Permits is Article Nine, and it should be Article Ten? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. Now, Solicitors' Permit to Article Nine, the one right after that, which is motorized vehicles.
Yeah.
Motorized water vehicles.
It's six, so it should be.
It's Article Four, but it should be Article Ten.
Yeah. So, you can fix that for us.
I fix it on my copy, and I'll make sure it's fixed going forward.
Um, you may as well, while you're preparing the final draft, accept all the changes that you're comfortable.
Yes.
So that it's a clean document.
Um, and then there's Article Seven, Volunteer Fire Department Tax Exemption, question mark?
Not one we can't do anything about.
But we could remove the question mark if we're leaving.
Oh, yeah, that's true. We have to read that one in place, because that was a special act of the legislature allowing the town of Monterey to do so. And the only way it can be removed, my understanding, from council, is by having the legislature repeal it.
Okay. What about, um, sorry, going, I didn't mean to jump around, but going back to Article Six. Um, so there was a conversation in the comments about removal of columns F and G from the table. I don't have a particular opinion, but I think we should be, make a decision and actually redo it, because I wasn't sure.
Okay, so what was the one before that one, Susan?
It's revolving funds, columns F and G.
I have that one. So, Article.
It's a question mark.
The.
That's, it's actually.
Fired department exemption. Is that Article Seven?
It's Article Seven, and there's a question mark in the title.
Okay.
Because we basically can't do that tax exemption, I mean, or that has to be in the bylaws.
Now, you're back to Article Six at once.
That's what I think now, is a special act. I've seen how good they are about special acts.
Right.
But isn't usually a special act, I couldn't ever find this in the legislature, but isn't usually a special act its own thing?
It is, it's.
Not, not to create a bylaw?
It's that people, if that's floating around someplace in much of my work.
Goodness, well, if restrictions and conditions are all listed as NA, then we should get rid of it. Thank you, F and G seems kind of pointless.
So, F and G, I thought we've, had been told by town council that we could remove those columns.
I believe we, I believe when I looked at the general laws, we could.
Maybe, David, they don't end up in the final versions of the bylaws, but you need to accept them and accept the revolving fund as a bylaw?
Yes.
But then they won't end up in the.
They don't end up in the event.
Yes.
So, but someone has to remove from the table.
I have. But I think they might need to be in here for acceptance.
Oh, gotcha. All right, I see your point. Look at, what was the next one? Um, the things that are in blue, what's the scoop with that? Also, all the color has to be taken out, because otherwise it's not gonna print proper. But, um.
You mean, is it a track change?
And was Article Eight, unregistered dilapidated vehicles?
Um, I think someone added blue, I somewhere, I don't think it's a track change.
Okay.
I think the text is just blue.
Right, but should it be when it's printed?
No.
So, yeah. Um.
So, David, can you do?
Everyone else mind removing?
Colored text.
Colored text.
Just make all the text black.
And the highlighted text.
Make all the text black, please, with no highlighting.
Yep. Um, so, did, were Donna's questions about Article Eight ever answered? Or do we just leave it? Because we currently have it.
The, meaning the.
Unregistered dilapidated vehicle.
She is the one who went, so, here's the deal with some of this, Mickey, you should know, is some of our bylaws that we already have might not really be acceptable to the Attorney General.
Yeah.
But what we're going to do for the most part is repropose them as we have them. And if the Attorney General strikes them down.
Then we'll remove.
That's how we'll live with it.
Yeah.
But I think that was her point with the unregistered dilapidated vehicles, is we can't go on someone's private property. Well, how does she word it?
But yeah, it's that we can't go on someone's private property, but I think the original idea was that if people are driving by and see it in their yard, that's when they're gonna make a complaint, not when they're likely to be private property.
But it's not so much about when you see it, it's as much as.
But you have to have a complaint.
Shall remove, shall remove.
Yeah, I don't think we remove, they have to remove. In other words, if someone puts a dilapidated vehicle in their front lawn, and everybody driving by can see it, and there's a complaint, we're gonna, they register the complaint, and the town tells them they need to remove the vehicle. We're not going, we are never going.
That's how I read it. You like it, Mickey?
No, no, I know about it, because Troy and I think Dan Andrews brought home some old Jeep or something, and it was this little side log road on the, it's off my road, and, and somebody could see it for the road and made a complaint, and they had it everywhere.
Okay, so, I don't really know what she's saying, because we're not, we're not going in.
We're not, we're gonna go on.
I think she may have read it, that we were gonna go on.
Oh, there was.
In the joke show.
Yeah, yeah.
It's immediate.
So, we delete the, delete the comment.
Yep.
Mark it as done.
Um, those permits, those, I think those were the ones, oh, then there's the motorized water vessels. I, I'm not sure what to make of the aquatic nuisance.
Well, I looked it up.
Whole situation. Uh, Article Oh, Six, which is strangely appearing after Article Nine, but that was what we're sorry about, right?
But that's the one that's supposed to be Ten.
Um, but also Article Six shouldn't follow Article Ten. Oh, Nine, Ten, right, it's supposed to be Ten. So, Two, Aquatic Nuisance Control. Um, I, I went and looked up, Chapter Twenty-One, Section Thirty-Seven B, and it's about DEP regulations. It has nothing to do with us, and we're not supposed to adopt anything aquatic nuisance control.
Well, it is about aquatic nuisance control.
Right, but.
It's just not a local acceptance statute.
Correct.
So, that's technically wrong.
Exactly. So, should we be saying it? Or, but you're saying that, that, that we'll leave it to the Attorney General to tell us not to do that? Then what, are we gonna have to come back in?
Or is somebody just like what it was and didn't want a coffee, like, wait that long?
I mean, but what is it that they want to say? Like, are, are, is the town saying we're gonna?
The town is emphasizing the importance of this particular MGL.
That we need to worry about aquatic nuisances? Like, it's not clear to me what the intent of this rule was, but as it stands, it doesn't really mean anything. Um, so, we should either figure out what we want it to be and fix it.
Well, there's, there's, there's nothing.
It's not happening.
Well, to, to, to Eric's point, what is the intent behind, was the intent behind this bylaw?
So, maybe, maybe they were saying, and this is where it might make some sense, it's not a local acceptance statute, but the town accepts the definitions contained within that MGL as it relates to the rest of this article.
Right. The town recognizes the importance of the mandates.
No, it's the definition, so in the definitions, there's aquatic nuisance, boat transfer, inland waters, low buoy boat transfer.
Right, okay, I see your point.
And vessel, um.
Speed restrictions.
So, I don't know if any of those.
Don't grant access. The thing is, none of these things actually have any obvious link to aquatic nuisance control, the things that then follow it.
Yes, they do.
Really? How?
You're looking at the correct section?
In Art, well, it's titled Article Six, Regulation of Motorized Water Vessels.
Oh, there.
The ones that.
Nuisance control.
Aquatic nuisance control, Section Two, is followed by boating restriction.
So, there's seven, there's seven definitions.
I'm looking, I'm looking directly at the past general law here, and it's very clear on what aquatic nuisance is.
Yep.
Um, yeah, it, it is. I, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that we're saying we recognize their definitions, but then we're not going on to say what we're gonna do about any nuisances anywhere in the rest of this regulation. Um, none of our regulations deal with the problem of aquatic nuisances, um, since the nuisances are biotic and not both being annoying, um, which seems to be the general intent of the rest of these sections.
Yeah, I'm just not linking the definitions in that, you know, to anything in the bylaw.
Exactly. So, basically, we're saying, we think they do a good definition of aquatic nuisances.
Yeah.
How does that help?
So, we have, we have to do, get rid of it.
Yeah, I think exactly.
It's not relevant. And then she says, um, Section Six, or Section Eight, that the definition in Chapter Ninety-B is better.
Yep, and I, I think because they don't have the water jet pumps, all of them is their primary motive power, so we might want to use that other. Section Eight should use the definition that she suggests, Ninety-B, colon, One.
Okay, so that was Ten-Eight.
Sorry. I'm really sorry.
No, it's good stuff, good stuff.
I didn't, I I will confess that I did not comb alarm systems.
Well, there's one comment, so every homeowner with alarm system has to apply for and obtain an annual permit, and I think they.
Which is the case, because I have one and we do.
Yeah, so that's. What it is.
Well, we're not, every homeowner has an alarm system.
Every homeowner with an alarm.
Everyone, we have an alarm system.
Oh, oh, with an alarm system, quite nice. Oh, with an alarm system.
So the animals are okay. She didn't have any, they didn't have any comments about it. That was the, I'm going further down and there's not a ladder, I'm, it's all the way to page three, two, I guess. First removal except for an injury, he said funny about it.
Do people actually put bubblers in the lake?
I've seen bubblers in people's lives.
People actually put bubblers in the lake, have you ever seen a bubbler in Lake Garfield?
It's unlawful, that's why they don't do it, Roger.
Somebody must have.
It's unlawful.
Yeah.
Do you want to keep the ice open?
I guess, but it's unlawful.
Really?
Yeah. Um.
I guess I could do with Jordan.
He did ask about the article. Page thirty three, Article eighteen recreational marijuana settlement.
Yeah, it should be a Z B.
About waters. Is it something?
So I spoke with David a little bit about this and I think. It's in the general bylaws.
And let's just.
It might be more appropriate in zoning bylaws, but this is where it is. And unless we added it there first and then took it out, I wouldn't really feel comfortable. Yeah, that would feel like a very substantive change.
Change, yeah, I concur. Um, his comment about the stretch energy code, authority for promulgating stretch energy code, we moved to D O E R and the regulations were recodified. I updated a reference in this bylaw to reflect those changes, so I guess that that's just dealt with and not mine. All right, the only other question I have, okay, so the fine schedule is established and that's all good and that's great, that's it.
And the, where it says list of special acts, we're not. It's not a part of the bylaws, so we're not worried about it right now.
Right.
And list of M D L acceptances is also something to be worried about, but not right now.
Right.
And we wouldn't have to accept those, they just are what they are.
Yeah. And because, the only because Amanda's such a good job, and this is the risk that you do of doing a good job. We could probably ask her to do those things, right? It's the responsibility of the town clerk. And she's come in, unfortunately, it hasn't been done for X number of years, I don't.
But it's the special acts.
The special acts and the M D L acceptances. I mean, I think.
I volunteered to help her because I spent just a little time reading these things.
So I think at the end of the day, the town clerk, if I'm not mistaken, it's the town clerk's responsibility to do this.
Yes.
And I think because she does such a good job with the office, it's something that we can ask her to.
I think so.
You know, now.
And I don't think it has to be on the warrant.
No, definitely not.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Justin, send me, just so I can make sure the updates I wrote down are the ones that you remember, send those to me, please, so I can make sure that everything that was discussed, I have in my notes.
Yeah.
I know I lived with Susan.
Well, I, I, I stopped writing them because I.
You should tell me anyway.
I'll have to go back for a picture. I'll, I'll make a list, it's fine, I can do that when I get home. Uh, I think I remember them.
I do want to know in a conversation with Donna that we've removed, we wanted to put in links to M G L, so if anyone was interested, she suggests removing those because M G L changes so frequently and it becomes binding on the town.
Yes.
And it's actually.
That rather than trying to go to it.
It's actually super easy for anyone who's, if they're looking on the internet, all they have to do is type in the chapter and section and it just instantly comes up, it's super easy. Okay.
Okay, so David, you're going to make those changes, uh, get all the formatting figured out, accept any.
Yes.
Changes that have been proposed by town council, unless discussed otherwise, all the text black and not highlighted. And and then send it over and then we'll put it into a draft version of the special then meeting work.
What's your definition of keep their dog under control at all times? Sit by it or down on leash.
Where is that?
Animal control. It's actually the definition in the state.
Yeah.
Which one?
Keep their dog under control at all times, but it's, it's very big, leash law.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah. Cause there was a conversation that happened before the summer about that.
I mean, I know the cops feel one way about it and those of us with dogs.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Although I have to say, I have mixed feelings depending on the dog and the owner. Right.
Okay.
Can I say one thing before you go on?
Yeah.
Hello. Yeah, um, I I stayed on because I I just wanted to tell David Myers, thank you for continuing on this for such a long time. I I had to leave that committee because I wasn't feeling well, had to get a couple new hips, but um, David just, just kept on and kept on with the group and I just wanted to say thank you so much, David, cause um. It was a kind of a thankless job in some ways and it took a long time and, oh my God, I remember those meetings. So I just wanted to say thank you and, yeah, that's it, thanks.
Thank you, Pauline.
I second that motion.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, thank you, David.
Stallboard.
You're welcome.
Thank you, David. Okay.
Lombardo Park me?
Um, yes, Roser's contract. Well, I don't even think we have a contract.
No, I guess she has a one year pay.
Well, she's still getting paid, she's just not. She doesn't have a contract.
I reached out to her a couple times.
I mean, she doesn't want.
Reach out again.
And we'll just, you know, until, until we don't, I don't know.
She just sends invoices.
Right.
And we just, it's been the same invoice, I think, I have to double check.
It just turns to date.
Um, I mean, I, I don't know, I, I, I don't think, yeah, the situation, the contract even really protects us. Um, so Lombardo Park Committee appointments, there's eight listed here, I think Glenn, uh, would be good to be a county managing liaison. Um, which can maybe also make the workload of the group more manageable. And I think I have someone for the Lakeview Tax District.
Ooh.
Um, but. Need to do a phone call.
Do we wanna appoint the people that we have already?
Yes.
Okay.
And how long? I think June thirtieth, twenty.
Since twenty.
Eight?
That works.
That works.
Okay.
You wanna make the motion or you want me to do it?
You can.
Okay, I move that we appoint, uh, what about the select board man, or you're running again, right, Frank?
What?
It's not on the agenda, it's not on the agenda.
But this is ser, this is, this is serious.
This is serious.
We appoint you for your twenty twenty eight and you're not on the select board and you're serious.
I, I, right now, I don't think I'm.
Well, you better find someone to replace you, Boboff.
I just got, you know, it's just, it's not that I don't enjoy it, it's just I, you know.
So. You don't have to defend it.
No, you don't, but we do need someone good to replace you.
All it takes is being on the select board, what you would want.
Mickey, what are you doing?
Busy that day.
So, all right, so Frank, when, when's your term up, Frank?
Wow, okay.
Frank! Frank's term ends tonight.
Did it last for one year? I'm just kidding.
Frank's terms is gonna end May first, twenty twenty six.
Right, okay, so. And are we staggering there?
Well, I mean, if you want me to start with it, I'd be more than happy to take it, I mean, could get someone in place.
Right.
What do you mean?
I, I, I mean, you know, Tom's the chair, if he wants to start this group meeting now, I mean, we can start it, I can do it, so.
Oh, yeah, oh, we wanna start it because.
Yeah, I know, I, I mean, did, you know, make a transition, I mean.
But you know, the select board is as much as to report back to us as it is to.
Probably.
Like, that's why we need someone from the select board on it, so I can advocate for, we need ten thousand dollars to hire a site planner.
Or what? But it would, I hardly, I mean, I don't mind stepping on and down and helping out, you know, you guys got a lot, you've done a lot more than I have, so I don't, no need to put any more burden on you guys.
Mike, you wanna add?
No, I don't think so. Your mother says a lot more.
Wow, three years flies, it really does, it's crazy, right?
It does. I mean, we'll be back, we run in a place in Maryland for six weeks and her, yeah, her brother's sick, you know, so she wants to be close to the family. I mean, we're doing planning to move her sale, but we want that freedom, you know. So.
Yep, I hear you.
It might get any younger.
That's for sure, none of us are.
Only you, Justin.
He's like, he's thinking, I'm not getting any, you're not getting a title. All right, um, so if we're doing, so I move to appoint Frank Abbott as a member of the select board to the Lombardo Park Committee effective immediately through the end of his tenure on the select board, May first, twenty twenty six. You want a second for yourself?
I didn't know if you were gonna.
All in favor, he's wanting to serve, so that's three eyes.
Yes, yes.
You agree with training now?
Yeah, I agree, yeah, but I can't vote.
But you're. Okay.
So how many of these people do we want, do we wanna do everyone through twenty twenty eight, is that what you're saying? Okay.
I think that's the one off where they start and they see it through.
Okay, I move to appoint Tom Mentis, Stevens White, Valzante, Michael Zisser, Robert DiVarglio, Elizabeth Vaught Evans and Lindsay Firsty to Lombardo Parkman appointment, uh, to Lombardo Parkman effective immediately through June, June fir, thirty.
Thirtieth.
Thirty, uh, twenty twenty eight.
Twenty twenty eight. Any questions?
I don't have any questions, I'll second my.
We'll call a loop.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, you know, this approved, so, uh.
Do we have the left to two?
They elected. They'll do it, I think Tom would be good to do it, he's on. Um, cause he's on the person, so really, just a little reminder, I mean. The, the goal here is they will get it up and running or make a plan for it to get up and running and then we'll transfer the ownership to the parks commission at a town meeting. And then the parks commission will run. This is a more of a planning committee, um.
Maybe we should call it Lombardo Park planning.
That's not a bad idea in hindsight.
Do we wanna just put it on there that it's the Lombardo Park Planning Committee? We renamed it at this meeting.
Not on the agenda.
All right, so moving on to review.
Answer all the questions you don't wanna answer.
Review employee handbook.
There were. There was nothing this week.
Oh, cool, um.
Sorry, but.
Do we need to do, did you, did Lindsay ever tell you if we need to do a contract?
Yes, so, um, that was in my notes, uh, and the answer is she, yes. She's happy to make the contract, she wanted to know if we wanted to put either an hour or a, um, dollar limit.
Well, the dollar limit is the annual budget, or what's left of that, and Roger will find that and Mary laughed when I said we had that much money.
Yeah, that's what.
Right.
But she actually, she didn't laugh, but she said that they never use, and I'm like, it's gonna be so easy to do an employee handbook.
Right. That face, yes, exactly, all right.
Hold on, give me one second, I can tell you how much is in there. Okay, two seconds.
Let's see, you charge fifty, right?
It's currently five thousand dollars, man, which is what's, what was the budget for.
Um, do we wanna say three K, just to cover ourselves money?
Yeah, I mean, they, whatever it is.
Cause you just never know what happens.
Yeah.
Right, what if, what if we have an explosion and some guy with an employee and we need them, so, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and if they don't use the three K, I hear you.
All right, uh, town administrator updates.
I just had a couple of things, one, one is I worked on a project because I know Frank and I have talked about National Grid and Next Am.
Yeah.
And the needs and desires and the wants and the lies of Next Am.
Yeah.
So I, uh, I, I assigned, um, Annabelle, Annabelle sat, I mean, I sat down and looked at the, uh, and the invoices. I had Annabelle match up the invoices, the invoices are usually about two months behind. So the net, the, we get a National Grid invoice and there's a credit on there and that credit is usually from an invoice that happens, you know, two months before, somewhere around there, so I had her go and match everything up. And at the end of the day, I was, I was very like, cannot understand what we use Next Am for, but at the end of the day, it actually in F, in F Y twenty four, saved us by using Next Am, one thousand five hundred and eight dollars and seventeen cents. Because what happens is.
What did it cost in confusion and administrative?
Two million four hundred and sixty.
Cause I, I doubt what that last year was there, and then there were, some of them, did you have like two bills that they're doing the soma field in this area?
No, they, they, they use, because there's, there's two, there's, because they associate with buildings, there's two accounts that they use for town hall, so it gets a little confusing.
It does, yeah, luckily.
So what happens in, is that National Grid, grid bills us, all right, for, let's just say a hundred dollars, right? Then Next Am creates a credit for us, a bill, a billing credit of twenty five dollars, right? That credit is subtracted from the National Grid bill, so actually.
Except the common tense.
Yeah, so National Grid owes us effectively on that bill seventy five dollars, but of that twenty five dollars that Next Am is charging for that credit, they actually take fifteen percent off and charge us that.
That, that's.
It's weird.
But, but the question is, is on your savings, because if you look at National Grid's actual charge per kilometer is much higher unless you go to like, oh, the left.
Yeah, yeah.
Which, which charge did you use?
We, we, we just used the straight National Grid bill.
Okay, so that, they're higher than that, you know.
So I think if we use, even if we use the aggregate, like right now, I think we're at, uh, it's like fifteen cents, the aggregate is.
That's about what that, I was like fifteen, thirteen cents.
It's like suppliers, it's like fifteen point three or something. Yeah, yeah, so in the aggregate, the, the aggregate actually, you know, uses, I don't know if this aggregate uses, um, um, solar or anything, but, you know, it's, but we, I did figure out those things.
So you, you gotta go store some figuring out.
Almost got in the pain.
I, I've been tracking that for several years with the library and, and, and sometimes it just gets, you know.
Wow, but I, I use it now on the phone with them, there's no method to the magic.
Okay, no more Next Am.
All right, so, um, do the others?
So we just can leave it, we're just not talking about it for now.
All right, we'll, we'll.
Well, are we just, are we gonna keep using?
Yeah.
Do you see how it's fifty hour? Okay.
Except for, it sounds like everyone spent hours averaging.
But I think now we, I think now into three years, we understand it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the thing is, if the problem was I couldn't figure out how it was working and we were cross because we thought it wasn't saving us money or charging us more, then, if we now establish that it is saving us money, then.
See, some of the taxes, it's.
It's just annoying to.
Yeah, it gets just hard to.
Yeah, it's hard to do.
Mind.
The, the other thing I wanted to, um, talk about, we can talk about it or we can bring it up in a, an agenda item, is, um, for another meeting, is, um, it has to do with our new hire in Allen and also how we might support that person, Allen with administrative staff. We have been using an administrative staff member, um, to, uh, to, to sort of help with the highway department in chapter ninety and other sorts of grants, this person has some experience with, we have a lower worth we hired her. And we've been using it, we've made agreement to use the, uh, the, um, the dollars that were available through the, uh, the budget for the, uh, for the highway superintendent. So I think there is some, I, I know there's some kind of back and forth as to whether or not we should or we shouldn't continue that. Right now, there's like thirty four thousand dollars that's.
No, there's money.
There's money, but I just wanna make sure, I just.
So we agreed to hire her temporarily.
Yeah. I just wanna have a, I just wanna have a conversation, I don't know, I don't want to have a conversation now, or do, do it some other, do it in a different meeting.
Yeah, we have to post on the next agenda.
Yeah, cause I think, um, I just, I understand where we've, we've had the conversation, why. Yeah, cause I think, um, I just, I understand where we've, where we've had the conversation, why we hired, um, and why we temporarily. I just think that there may be some help and support in kind of onboarding this, this position.
Yeah.
With, with some of the, some of the things, and it might be what we'll have a conversation.
Next agenda, great question, next agenda.
That's me.
I have a couple of things that came up when I was reading the minutes, that we're gonna be doing today. Um, has, did anyone ever approach the historical commission about this long Brett Road thing?
I haven't yet, I will, I will talk to Robert.
Um. What are we doing, like, there was a back and forth, emails about David Cameron potentially participating on the NOI since Emily cannot.
Yeah, but I thought that Mike said he's not available.
Was it David or Emily that was not available?
We, we have to, another agenda.
Okay, well.
I, I, I.
You'd have it soon though, because we want that going forward, right? So, we need to have someone do it.
It's just not an emergency, but yes, yes.
Okay.
We should have someone do it, I, I mean, we need to keep it on the forefront.
Yeah, we need to, uh, work, or I just think we have a next agenda.
Yes. Next agenda, um, I knew you went to that seasonal communities meeting, and I couldn't make it, could you just give us a little process on what happened there?
Yeah. Um, I got my notes, can I run and get my notes there?
Sure.
Sure.
What meeting?
There was a seasonal communities commission meeting the other day, um.
Because we're still, we never made a decision about whether the town wanted to accept it. And, and we still need to, and part of the reason we didn't was that they hadn't fleshed out what it act, what our responsibilities would be, or what possible do we have. Last time, dude, I was like, is not really gonna do us any good. Like, I, you know, there doesn't seem to be a positive sentiment about doing a dual tax rate. I don't have any problem with allowing tiny houses, I just don't think it's gonna do anything positive. I don't think it'll do any at all, actually. Um, so, if there isn't more, what's the point? No help, pardon? It's no help whatsoever.
You want to wait?
Yeah, I'll wait. So, there's lots of, they haven't really finalized the, uh, the actual regulation yet, that's still coming out, I think January, January, right, and that. So, but they, um, they basically the advisor, the seasonal communities advisory council. They've, um, one of the things that they're looking at in specifically Berkshire County, is how to, uh, define differently what a seasonal community is, to accept that different than, say, like, um, like typically, the, the, the number one thing is like, how many second owners do you have? Like, how much, it's been forty percent. And, uh, there's several towns in Berkshire County that, um, don't reach that. So, they're actually going at, looking at it more as a short-term rental piece. So, if they have more than, right now, they're saying if they have more than three and a quarter percent short-term rentals, then they, they are considered, um, they will be part of the community, seasonal communities group, so Eggermont, Great Barrington.
And how would you have to demonstrate the percentage?
Essentially, yeah, by who's registered at the state, is kind of what I'm guessing, the way that they would do it. That's about the only way you know, it's that way. So, that's Eggermont, Great Barrington, Lee, Lennox, New Marlboro, Richmond, Sandersfield, Sheffield, West Stockbridge, and Williamstown.
All have, and.
Would now be.
Monterey was on there too.
Monterey already was, so Monterey has already been part of that original.
And well, we make the other cut at sixty percent, right?
Yeah, we make the forty percent and, and some of the things. So, their biggest recommendations are, um, uh, exempt trusts from the thirty B, which I think they already do. Year-round housing occupancy restrictions, these are sort of things that they're trying to come up with. Um, except majority, uh, let's see, that, that can just be done at the, oh, changing the acceptance and denial, because it's supposed to be done at the, uh, town meeting. So, acceptance would be a majority rule, but the pullout of it would require two-thirds of, of, of the, um, of an annual town meeting, because they don't want people sort of jumping into it, getting whatever they might get, and then leaving, money is or something like that. Also, setting up deed restrictions, as, uh, you can be able to set up deed restrictions, these are sort of new technical things they're trying to come up with, so.
Interesting.
You can actually create, you know.
Deed restrictions to do what?
Based on, um, mon, money, so in other words, somebody makes a certain percentage of, uh, the, uh, uh, the area median income. It's just in the deed, it cannot, they always have, the, the, the only people that can buy that house have to have a certain, uh, restriction. So, those are things that they're looking at, they do this stuff in, uh, Nantucket, Martha's Vineyard, they do it already, where they have specific deed restrictions on.
On your income to buy the house?
You can do that, yeah.
Holy no.
They, they set up this bylaws, so they're changing that as a technical assistance system. Well, let's see, I mean, I, I can't remember.
Completely floored by that one.
I, I can't remember what they expanded, the employment, that they're expanding employment-specific housing. They're also making legislation, um.
And I wonder if that's to not just municipal employees.
I think so, I think it is outside of that, like nursing and all of those sorts of things, like doctors.
Necessary employees, but not necessarily, that they have to, they have to be work for the.
The other thing, which right now is a home rule petition, because I know Great Barrington does that, are transfer fees, they're trying to make it legislative that you can kind of accept it, where anywhere from half a percent to two percent for one million, for transactions of over a million dollars, you can have a transfer fee, which would go into like a housing trust.
In other words, when you sell a house, you have to pay into it.
Yeah, yeah, so, I, I, uh, Great Barrington does that right now.
So, what is third person, like in Great Barrington?
Uh, I don't remember, I think it might be a half a percent or one percent, so it's up there.
Yeah, cause those kind of two percent is a lot.
It's a lot, yeah.
It's a lot.
They were kind of aggressive down there, I think because of the, uh, of, they're, they've gotten pretty aggressive with short-term rentals down there.
Yeah, they have kind of eliminated the parking and stuff like.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, you know, they're, they're trying to sort of build model bylaws at the state level, and, uh, develop model deed restrictions. So, those are sort of things that come up. For affordable housing trusts, um, they're, they're still sort of, I think they're trying to figure that out with the thirty B. So, like, for transfers, like municipal, from municipal properties to the trust, you know, what does that mean? So, that, like, the, the, you know, like, uh, I don't know how it would work with an affordable housing trust and thirty B, because it's like a procurement law. So, there may be some reason why you have to use procurement laws to get, for someone to donate you land, but, you know, the, so, so sorts of things, what they're looking at. Um, those are kind of the real things that there's money out there, they're looking to give community grants up to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. There's, um, you know, improvement plans, uh, capital improvement plans to support seasonal use is four million dollars. Will be out there starting June, Joe, July first, so there's already two million bucket, two million dollars in the bucket, they're gonna put two million more. So, it's all just, and a lot of that money, community grant money could go right into a housing trust, those sorts of things, that's how you would use it, so.
Why we need the trust?
Yeah, that's sort of why, why they, but those are kind of the, the basic, the, the big items that they, that they talk about. So, again, whether or not we can use it or not, I don't know, so.
I know, it's still.
Until, until the regulations all come out, I mean.
It's so iffy until that happens, you know.
I sent some draft regulations, I don't know if I sent some around.
The devil in the details, then.
Yeah.
That, that was all I had.
But the only thing is, you know, I sent that, I'm, I'll send his a paper up for, you know, when, the data, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, took me very long.
I used to say one, we have like.
Um. Oh, one thing, I was just looking at a letter with Allen, I don't know if y'all saw this, but we offered him eighty-seven thousand five hundred.
So, I was just gonna say, I just realized we didn't actually ever sit.
No, yeah, I thought for a while.
Did he want anything different on vacation?
He just asked for three weeks, that was it, you know, and the, is, the, there is a truck, the, the same thing that like Jim had, by taking the truck home.
And where does he live?
He lives up in Richmond, the south side of Richmond, so.
Yeah, so during the interview, he said, if there's a snowstorm or something, he can stay at sister's house on Blue Hill Road.
Yep.
Where his father lives.
You mean, you mean if there is a storm? He said if there's a storm.
I said if there's a snowstorm.
A snowstorm, I heard a snowstorm, and I'm like, why would he have a snowstorm?
I'll see, man.
What?
Uh, he hasn't been Pete yet.
And you talked to, what's his name, in the Marlboro within?
Yeah, yeah, I spoke with him, yeah, yeah, so I talked to, to Paul Crump, he applied, and, um, yeah, I mean, if he's, clean startup Monday, that's kind of interesting, so.
Which is actually great from, well, he may have, I don't know.
Hey, I asked him, I said, if you, uh, did you have to give any notice to yours, he says, no, I talked to them, they kind of knew I was, I was looking for it anywhere, so, anyway, so they, um, I'll start the paperwork and get it all going, and then talk to Pete. Plan a meeting in.
First kind of retirement.
I know, I gotta work on all that.
So.
Before he starts tomorrow.
Tonight.
At least it's Tuesday, not Friday, right?
Yeah, but basically, Thursday because of the holiday.
Yeah, 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 so, so, yeah, and I think that was, that was.
Actually, if he doesn't have the first kind of retirement, I'll fill that before work, that can be the first work activity.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, don't leave your room until it's formed.
Yeah, yikes.
Actually, I think it was, it was earnest, because I, I couldn't remember my own process on the, uh, on the onboarding, and then I went, well, you were on board.
I know.
Trying to learn how to onboard myself.
Onboard with no passwords.
It was quite, it was an achievement because I'm here, so. But, um, I, uh, I went through and I actually looked at it, cause, oh, you know what I was doing, I was doing it with somebody, with someone else, so helping them walk through it, and I noticed that the form that they were using was an old form for the, uh, which I couldn't, it was so confusing. So, I sent the new form to, uh, the new forms to, um, Harper's, and now it's all part of the process, so.
Yep.
If I, if I do it right, this could be the very first time I've guessed, if I'm right, a free test. I should be able to go in, print the stuff out, and fax it, and, and, and email it, right, to version kind of retirement.
Okay.
All goes well.
Alright, shall we do some minutes?
Yeah.
Woo.
Before, before I leave, you said you wanted to meet with me.
Probably have some questions, Mickey.
It's not on the agenda, but.
It wasn't anything long, it was just a couple of things about like.
Yeah, and I would like to talk to you about the payroll, I mean, the.
Oh, personnel thing?
Personnel, that's okay.
Uh, you said something about Monday.
I only wanted to do that for three years, so.
I, I, I have zero currently on my Monday calendar.
Okay, so what time did I?
I, I don't know, you wanna, wanna come to my house and have coffee at nine, ten?
Or you can, why don't you come to my house and bring your own cup of coffee, because I don't make coffee.
No.
But I have a bit of driveway things.
There is nothing wrong with my driveway. I objected to that.
Not on the agenda.
Alright, let's make it ten, so I can make sure the dog gets along.
Okay.
Mickey's house.
And the dog can come, actually. I, I don't want a dog, my daughter would do it.
It's always in there.
Okay, ten o'clock, Monday.
He's, he's always in a pit row.
Okay, um.
Bring your own coffee.
Are you headed out, Mickey?
Yes, I am, I don't do minutes.
We have an old one, September, ConCon.
So, we now have a, a good, um, plowing crew, we have, what, two?
We're five, five people, we're fully staffed.
Pardon?
Five people, fully staffed, we're.
Yeah, but how many people can plow?
Five.
Five.
Four, five?
But, and if you're asking how many people have CDL for the big truck, it's probably two.
Three.
Three, three, oh, okay.
Yeah, he has, he has a CDLA, Pete has a CDLA, and Don, uh, Donnie has a CDLV.
Oh, okay.
So, they could all drive the big trucks, the plowing.
So, why do you see?
Zany, is he gone for?
That's, uh, that's gonna be our new highway superintendent's, one of his jobs is to get into his, uh, his hoisting licenses, and also figure out how to do CDs. Cause now, now that we're fully stacked, it, it's kind of a tough time to do it in the wintertime, we're kind of working around storms, but if we can, now that we have three people with CDs, it would make it a lot easier.
Yeah, great.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye, everybody have a happy Thanksgiving.
You too.
You too.
September eighteen.
May there be no interneisen fighting amongst the family.
There will.
Okay. What day are we doing?
September eighteen.
Yeah, wow.
This was a ConCon meeting.
Great, um, I had a grandful of one comment.
So, as a procedural thing, I just went through it and pulled out the comments that were made by the select board.
Yeah.
Cause it was just a ConCon.
Me, he extracted that, and that's what these minutes are.
Yeah.
My Roger, we've, actually, before we deal edits, which is like super important.
Right.
We also, since the, I don't know, procedures, since Roger has been doing minutes, we need to figure out a consistent, easy, efficient way to get approved minutes in Roger's hands.
Right.
So, do you, what version do you have?
Right now, I, I'm looking, right now, I'm looking at the version that you sent, because nobody else sent me edits.
Yes, so, can you pull it up on laptop?
Yeah.
Why don't you just make any edits that we talked about right there.
Sure.
On there.
Don't worry about it. Good job.
And then if that works, Roger, we can try it out tonight, and if that works, I think that is less of a headache than having hard copies and different versions.
This right here, it'll work. Yeah, we got it right here.
So, my, my only comment, which is pretty small, under me, Susan Cooper comments, um, I put the word and in between biology and education.
Okay, where, where is that?
It's, uh, biology appeared at the end of the second line, and I put and in between biology and.
Oh, biology.
And.
So, with a background in biology and education.
Sure, so, my changes, which I, you know, just before the meeting, but, I just kind of explained, I dealt a little bit more into why did we call the meeting? It, it's a very simple thing, as annoying as it is, but I just wanted that to be clear. If you, if we don't call the meeting, we can't talk.
Is this, um, minutes with my edit?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Nine eighteen. And then. I don't know, I had some comments, the things I made about mostly fairly much changes.
So, I'm not, uh, that, that, cause I'm not comparing the modes, what were the, what was the change to the explanation?
I don't know, it's all some of the little things I can just show you.
So, these, these, basically, it's a lot of them, there.
Looks good.
Alright.
Yep.
Good answer. I honestly couldn't remember what I said, voted at the end, I couldn't remember, so.
Yeah, I don't, when I don't remember, I would put.
Be a adjourned.
Yeah, and that captures the spirit of it.
Okay, I moved that we approved the select board meeting minutes of nine eighteen, twenty twenty-five as amended.
Second of all, any other discussion? We'll call a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, unanimously approved.
Next one, ten twenty-four.
Ten twenty-four.
You, you have a lot of changes.
Yeah, a lot, but that's definitely answered.
I had Justin, I don't know.
Oh, I don't have, I don't have.
Oh, no, most of these changes are Justin's, I only had a couple, um, starting with the date.
I was, let me tell you, I was, I was confusing myself.
Oh, hey, I was supposed to catch all this, so.
Um.
No, I, um, I, I noticed that too after I printed it out, because I was like, oh, I'm four.
So, you, Roger, you have pulled up the eleven twenty-four with my edits?
The ten twenty-four.
Ten twenty-four.
Yes, yes, I have that with your edits.
And you're just gonna add Susan's, or should Susan just email hers, and then you combine them, what's easier for you?
You have a lot of them?
No.
I can just type them right here, it's just.
So, I deleted the letter T in the sentence, unfortunately, the way this shows, it's really confusing, it doesn't show what you actually, it just says you deleted T. Um, it's under discussion and signing the annual bond anticipation note on that first page. In the third, the last line where it says annual town meeting minutes, apparently I deleted the T somewhere in that, those two lines.
I don't know. It says annual town meeting, oh, it's the word minutes, it's got.
It has an extra T, so there you go. Man, it touched.
Yeah.
Oh, that's my fault.
It's supposed to be the word minutes, right?
Yeah.
Alright, on the next page, the top of the, like, after unanticipated business, in that top paragraph, I deleted the word immediate.
Where, and where is that at?
I think it might have been immediate emergency permission or emergency immediate permission.
Your thing doesn't show, members debated whether immediate. Members debated whether immediate. Beaver traffic should occur, is that what you're saying?
Is this under Beaver Act?
I don't know, which one shows up? And it doesn't really tell you.
Well, that's weird, that's.
I know it's weird. I agree with you.
Beaver traffic should show with a line through it, there's a, that setting.
I know.
There's a setting here, go to all markup, markup options, go to markup options.
So this is.
Add, um.
Members debated whether immediate.
Let's get rid of formatting.
No, well.
And.
Insertions and deletions, what you want.
I know, I'm just trying to leave insertions and.
Preferences, you want to see straight through on deletions.
It's set to straight through.
So this is the.
So I think where I'm looking is members debated whether immediate beaver traffic should occur.
Yeah.
Delete immediate.
I'm really sorry about that, I don't know why I'm saying that. Um, but it is. And I think that was it. So, there really weren't many. When I said there were a lot, it was because it was yours. You'd already done everything. I just, I just looked at the one you have already.
Yeah, no, it's. Um. I move that we approve the minutes of October twenty-fourth as amended.
A second of motion.
We'll call a vote?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, unanimously approved.
Ten twenty-eight. Uh, the only thing I have on here is also a change in the date, because the meeting was on September second, not September third, it's all the way under approval of minutes. You have it correct in the title, but not correct in the body.
Say that again?
Under approved minutes of nine oh-two, you then said the select board reviewed the September third meeting this, and you approved September third meeting. That was the only thing I said, I mean. Yeah. It was pretty small.
But it was September second.
Correct.
And I actually checked. The agenda.
It wasn't.
Yeah.
Also, I don't know how Mickey spells her name, but I do M I C, M I C K E Y.
Yeah, I didn't know either.
But Jervis is definitely J E R V A S.
V A S.
Yeah, okay.
And maybe, then we can ask her, for my whole life, I just spelled it M I C K E Y.
Okay, I'll, I'll ask.
I don't, for some reason, I think that's right.
Ooh, I also, I just found another.
But it's J E R V A S.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I know.
Um, I found one more little typo.
Yeah.
Type of.
Yes.
Um. Last paragraph on my first page. Middle, middle line.
Yeah.
There needs to be a space in between administrative and duties.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Administrative duties is not one word.
Yeah, that must have.
It, I, you know exactly why these things happen, it's not like it's a big.
I've, I've got one question about.
And there's this.
Yeah.
Sorry, go.
We had under the Lombardo thing, said no. Select board representatives expected no member volunteer during the meeting, I thought I volunteered.
So, so. Tom. Benzi.
Yeah.
I think was talking about. That first meeting where we said we were gonna do it.
Right.
And actually, he was saying. I think we should delete that, because unclear.
Yeah.
I thought, I thought it was.
I added that, you know, I said it on the committee.
Yeah, it said that no member volunteered during the meeting.
Just delete that, poll signs with all the time.
Yeah. I, uh.
Because I couldn't remember if we actually voted on it.
We did, we did get Frank, we did get.
We didn't, we didn't vote, so we, we talked about it, and I volunteered to do it.
We agree, Frank will do it. Even though he's only going to do it for a couple of months.
Okay, one more stupid little typo.
I'd rather do that.
Under transfer station Sunday hour.
Go to Pittsburgh or somewhere.
Page two.
More than the cars. The guy from Great Basin, you know?
It's sort of the middle of page here.
They can't get cars?
Yeah.
It wouldn't put it on.
So I, when I did it, it was on video.
Yeah, but then it stashed or something, but there's, there's no, man.
Page two.
Page two.
Page two. Right.
Hundreds of pages.
What about page two?
Um, changing this going to beginning January one, twenty twenty-six would not overrun the space FY twenty-six step.
That was another mean. Was issue the space. It's because the track change is making it so hard.
And there's one more at the bottom of that page, between until and June, the very last line of that page.
Yeah.
All good?
There we go. We'll make a motion that we accept the minutes for ten twenty-eight as stated.
Amended? There, oh, there's one more.
There's one more.
Accountant contract, second to last sentence on that page, page four. Of space between accountant comma and members. I know it's too good a little bit, still.
Yeah. I don't know why, that doesn't usually happen to me as much as it did. But it did.
Sometimes it, it feel like sometimes when it happens, they just.
I got it, I, I got it.
Oh, we're supposed to be.
Right, I see. That's right. And just so you know, Roger, I'm getting approved copies of all of them. That's what.
What's that?
I have a, I have, I'm getting, I'm giving all the changes to.
Okay.
Just for fun.
Um, so.
For paranoia.
Because the contract was drafted. Oh, I see.
I totally get it.
Oh, I see, there's a comma there. There we go.
Okay. Look at him, he already sent us the question.
All right.
What do we have to?
Um, well, did we, we have to vote on ten twenty-eight?
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
Yes, unanimously approved, that's all I got prepared for, I think there's one other.
Yeah, I, I sent two more.
Yeah, twelve and eighteen.
Oh. And eighteen?
Yeah, I sent that out.
The last week?
It was the last week.
I sent it out like five o'clock or something.
Yeah.
Something ten, five.
Well.
You want to read it?
I kind of do, because we're not gonna meet.
Yeah, I got it forever.
And I just want to put this in there.
Do you want to do twelve?
Well, let's see, where are we at now? We have ten twenty-eight approved.
Yep.
Yeah, so we got the twelve.
We have twelve and eighteen. Um, yeah, we can do one or other, or both.
Good, but because it would be. Oh, you guys can do one.
I sent you have them, right?
Well, I know.
Can you imagine what we caught up on, my God?
So, we're looking at eleven.
Eleven twelve.
Eleven twelve first.
So I sent one. I sent one, and then I sent another one that had said with updated added documents.
That's one I, I've used. Well, I can give you a really easy one, Swan Rider, like, two minutes. Not my fault.
Where is that at? That's on.
It said consider transfer a portion of Red Road.
Oh, yeah.
It said there's three times. I totally know why you, like, it's, I only know it because I walk the dog on that road, and I smell on that road.
I know that, I just forgot it. Smells.
I'm only giving you the really, like, simple ones on that.
Thirty-nine seconds.
Yeah.
I learned it.
Hey, you, you misspelled your own name. Under Fire, by your shame and scary. Roche. Come on, Roche.
Roche, noege. Where is, where is that again?
The last sentence, under shame, was Fire, by your shame and scary.
Oh, there you are. Oh, I've called myself worse.
Oh, Roche. Put an accent on it, and you have it. Sorry, it's good length. Oh, I did have a couple of sensitive ones, but I'm waiting for you.
Well, Sheamus's name is spelled right in the s- section.
Oh, yeah, I installed it in there.
Differently.
I'm spelling things.
It's S H.
Yeah.
I had it, right?
It's the, okay, uh, recognized version. I was about to emphasize, but that's inside, but it isn't. Yeah. And I missed that one, and they're like right next to it.
It's funny how the brain works, um.
Okay. With shame, shame, I can't believe I missed it. Um, so I have one, a couple of little ones. Under, uh, first page, under grant writer for public grant.
Yeah.
The last sentence, I thought perhaps it should read, um, architect review requirements cited in last year's rejected MVP main road culvert grant application.
In last year's rejected MVP.
Rejected MVP main road culvert, just, like, it should be obvious, but it wasn't the first time I read it for it, so.
So I would put an MVP.
Main road culvert grant application, just to be clear, what? Um, second one is under Lake. What, what?
I was just looking at how many comments I got this afternoon, that's why I missed the minutes, sorry.
Oh, Tom. Um, Lake Garfield drawdown update.
Yeah.
Um, in the middle, it said reach required depth by the Anavon. I was gonna suggest reach required drawdown of three feet by the Anavon.
Yeah.
Did I read? Oh, one more stupid typo. Plan annual employee review process, bottom of page three, first sentence of that last paragraph should say forms plural.
Hold on, so.
The first paragraph?
Second paragraph, the.
Oh, the.
Form should say forms. Since there's three of them.
They have all the forms.
Yes.
Oh, you wrote eleven twenty-eight.
And that's.
Yeah, sometimes you, um.
Yeah. I get a, I get caught in time travel sometimes.
Now you're writing the minutes in the minutes of the meeting, you just, we can act up.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry about being in the wild, it's, you know. I feel like we could reduce something by one line, so we don't have a whole.
It doesn't matter, because it never gets posted as a word.
Oh, okay, that is very stupid.
Never mind.
Dog.
Okay. That's all I have.
Um, all right, uh, I was good.
Okay.
Other than the comments I made, and that's November twelfth.
Yeah.
Yep.
Make a motion that we accept the twelfth minute as amended.
Second.
Call a vote?
Yes.
Yes, unanimously approved, and moving on to November eighteenth, which is last week.
Yeah.
How crazy is that?
Insane.
So. Um, make a Jervis, I would spell it. Yeah, I would change it to M I C K E Y.
Yeah.
J R B A S.
You ready for this? Talk about one stupid change of my thought? Go for it, take it, take your time, because it's ridiculous, it's a comma.
Where is that?
Um, on the, well, second, I guess it's the last page, Lake Garfield Sixfoot Drawdown NOI.
Last page?
Um, yeah, so the second line, the, the sentence that reads also if for the NOI, the town should deploy, it should be also comma.
Where is the setting?
Lake Garfield Sixfoot Drawdown NOI.
Yeah.
Susan reported, the first sentence, the second, yeah, comma. It, it, it's incredibly confusing.
It's actually, it actually said, I should put one there.
Right.
I had a comma on page two.
Yeah.
Under, uh, Lombardo Park applications. It says potential liaisons from non-participating groups.
Potential.
And I would just delete from non-participating groups. Because we were talking about, like, the counts on aging and the Lake Buell.
Just.
District, but it's not like that.
Community structure, potential liaisons, and likely appointment decision?
Yeah.
Okay.
You don't have. Where, where is that again?
The last sentence of Lombardo Park.
Oh, so just get rid of.
From non-participating groups.
Liaison, oh, yeah.
Right. Just potential liaisons, comma. All right. Are we good?
Make a proposal that we accept the minutes for eleven eighteen as amended.
Um. I would also just say that we can. Downsized the documents used at the meeting.
Yep.
By, instead of listing each personnel policy, just write personnel policies.
Okay.
And for whatever reason, I don't know, the meeting minutes do not count as a document used in a meeting. They approve meeting minutes of other meetings.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you can delete those.
So I'm, I'm just gonna have three things then.
Because they're always available, probably, that's probably why.
Just give me one second here, sorry.
Personal policies, zebra muscles.
Yeah, so I'll do, hang on a sec, the, uh. Oops.
Okay, when that happens.
Thank God for Ctrl-Z.
I'm not ready.
And then Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Draft.
Wait, did it need to go on there? It's not here.
I don't know, that's, um.
What was that again?
Municipal Affordable Housing Trust.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
And then personnel policies and, and zebra muscles.
Which are them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And no meeting minutes. All right.
That's all, I just said it again, this was the, what was that, parking position, the Housing Trust.
Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Draft. And then just delete all those policies.
Yeah. Delete the minutes.
Yeah. Okay, um, do that, do the all, does the actual five oh need to be attached?
Probably.
The policies?
Yeah.
Yeah, so by law, we just need to have them available upon request.
Right, so.
Um, if they're on your laptop.
It's not that.
There's not.
Yeah.
Super helpful. Uh, if someone comes to Roger down the road, so.
Well, he has them, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. It's actually something I've been working on, so. I think actually, let's approve the minutes of eleven eighteen, and then we'll speak briefly about minutes.
Move to approve the minutes of eleven eighteen as amended.
Second motion.
We'll call a vote?
Yes.
Yes, unanimously approved. So. Whenever meeting minutes are posted, by law, we just need to have the documents used at the meeting available upon request.
Right.
But. We have made a habit policy of attaching them. To the meeting minutes online to make them more easily accessible. I also have a list. Of the last year of all the documents that are missing. Starting in April of twenty twenty-four. And it's not huge, I mean, it's, it's, uh.
Is that a great one?
Document, no, it's all of them.
Wow.
But it's a document here, there, like. That's hard to track down for the most part, sometimes because it's like. Some reserve fund transfer costs which get faxed off to the treasurer.
Right.
Things like that, so. Um, it's something that I'm working on.
Okay.
And I might actually reach out to you and ask for all the personnel policies, so we can get them. And maybe it's a good project for Annabelle.
To gather up personnel policies?
Well, to gather up that, these documents.
Put them in one. Oh, I get you.
Put them up with the, I mean, for every document, you see here, there's another seven that are available with minutes.
Also, there's no need to gather personnel policies, I have them all in a folder, I can just send them.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Again, if you want them as a folder, it's like.
I actually do that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, whatever, yeah, whatever we've adopted.
Yes, all the ones we've adopted are.
Or do you want to write them or all?
The other ones are still in the review thing, and then I have the ones that I have.
No, if it's, if it's a draft, it's a draft, we use it, it is, people technically should be able to see a draft that we use at a meeting. If it's a draft that you worked on at your house.
Oh, do you want, you, do you want the draft we finalized, or the draft that came in?
I think.
And the draft we finalized, because that gets you.
But let's not overcomplicate it, let's just get the most up-to-date version of it.
That was my thought.
Technically, maybe it's supposed to be the one that you touched at the meeting, but this stuff gets complicated with digital, so just.
It would get touched with the, I mean, that's the problem. But it would get touched with the, I mean, that's the problem, you come in with one, you open it up.
So it's, it's messy in the digital world, but.
It's even messy in a physical world, what would you do, bring in the draft, have a copy of the draft and a copy of the finalized one?
Yeah, I don't know, but it's not overgravellized.
No, I will just.
It's something that I'm great, that we are.
I'm happy to send you, I have them in a folder, I'll make me done, I will send them all, just remember, and I'll then send the whole folder again when we're finished.
Absolutely.
And you'll have duplicates, because although it's already done, we'll have it in there.
Oh, no, it's, it's no problem.
Okay.
But it is something that I'm working on to try to.
Yep.
Get up to speed. Okay.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
I was second.
Call a vote.
Yes.
Yes, meeting adjourned unanimously at, uh, by unanimous vote at eight eleven P M.
Well, have a good Thanksgiving.
Yes, definitely, um, I think.
Oh, tricked him.
We need to call the term, the exterminator?
Yes, please.
There's a mouse.
There's a mouse here.
Oh, I got it, oh.
Oh, my god, when do you not have a mouse?